I don't know.
I can't call it one too. I'm not a champ.
Okay, speaking of, right, we're gonna call this meeting ordered seven fourteen with apologies for the delay from the previous meeting and some technological setup. So guys bear with me, we have a couple of things to go through, we'll get to really fast. Do you have any wish to change the agenda around? We will get to the two groups of students as soon as we're done with the hearing. Alright, so we're gonna have a quick public hearing to accept a donation from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation. Julie, is this you?
It is. So there's been a history with Dorothy in this group for a long time. She's donating again, as you know, completely generous. I wanted to hear their updates and wanted to contribute again. So thank you. And they're all here to present you, so if you're all about it.
As always, we appreciate the foundation's work. Would anyone like to make a motion for this public hearing?
I move to approve with gratitude, a donation from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars for NEBP as presented.
Hi Lisa, all those in favor? Alright, that is unanimous. Thank you much. Moving right along to now I'm gonna close the public hearing and open the regular resident board meeting. Is there any wish to have any public comment on things unrelated to items already on the agenda? Seeing none, there will be another. Oh yeah. Why are you sitting over there?
Well, because last week elected our new representative to the school board, which is Ian Sun.
Yeah, just I wanted to quickly thank the board for welcoming me at the start of last year and bearing with me for this last year. It's been a great experience. I hope to carry it into next year, even though I will be gone for the first semester, so I won't be representative to this board. But I hope, I know Ian's gonna do a great job. So I just wanted to thank the board.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Your name and your title? Thank you all. We appreciate your service and working. Alright, any other public comment? Alright, seeing none, we're gonna switch to the RMS vignette on robotics. That's you guys. Just wanna introduce yourselves and tell what's going on.
Well, thanks for having us, number one. We want to acknowledge the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for our recent trips to Worlds. So we were invited to give a quick talk on sort of what the first Lego League has been for these guys and a little bit about that. So my name's Eric Kravitski.
I'm a Swiss person.
This is my wife, Rynos. She's also in Norwich. We co-coached this particular team from RMS and I'll just give you an overview of first really quickly. She'll talk a little bit about how we organized and then the team will give you some talks. Okay, so first Lego League is sort of the first foray into the first series of robotics, right? And so they kind of have three different levels. First Lego League, first tech challenge, which there is a theme here in over first tech challenge. And then first robotics is sort of their marquee event. That does have a significant aspect to it. So our grades are basically six to eight here in the US about eleven to fourteen years olds. Okay, so first Lego League has a bunch of core values are really centered on including everybody, getting everybody participating, everybody bringing ideas to the table, using their innovative ideas to improve the world, working together, teamwork, having fun, learning new skills and really embracing technology in a whole bunch of different ways, right? So kids at least at RMS and the two years that I coached have joined primarily because it sounds like fun. It is fun and they learn how to code. They learn how to do Lego robotics or they love robotics and Legos in general and they just wanna keep going with it. So that's why we see them. At the beginning of each year for us, we've kind of sat down with our team and said, what do you want to get out of it? Do you want to do robotics? Do you want to do coding? And these guys said, we want to win New Hampshire states, in which I'm not gonna spoil it. They did. But we, because there's so many facets, we let them sort of pick their own path through this process. And so I'll tell you a little bit about the way this goes. So you hear Lego robotics. What you see there on the screen, that's the Lego robotics board. It's actually only a quarter of the company. So there's missions on the board and then they have a robot that has to go and do these missions. And each mission achieves them a certain number of points. And they can choose, how do we do these missions? Do we combine them in single drives or do we bring it back to the home area and change what the robot looks like and then go try to do other missions? So there's strategy, there's robot design, there's coding, there's a whole bunch of different pieces. Let's say you just click there. So that's one quarter of it. There are three other quarters. There's robot design presentation. They have to give a presentation like an engineering presentation. This is how we created it. This is the choices we made. And they give it to a team of judges. You can click the next one. Then there's a completely separate piece, which is innovation project and our team's done a fantastic job with that as well. And this year was improve the lives of people working and living under in the ocean or under the ocean. So it's basically ocean research related. And you'll hear a lot about that. And then the last piece is core values. How well are they embracing this idea of including people, sharing ideas, collaborating, working together, being positive in their feedback and not negative in their feedback? A lot of those pieces that they get just on those aspects as well. And I'm not gonna go through all these, but there's a lot of pieces. We only have ten weeks between when our season starts and when regionals is. And as coaches, we have a lot of things we want them to learn, basic skills in coding, creating this idea for the innovation project. It's all team driven. We don't tell them what to work on. They figure that out on their own. They have to figure out and create these. These are our final iterations of the information they share with the judges at this competition, its posters and presentation, how they stand up and communicate with everybody. And then, let's see, lots of different skills. So I'll let Ryan take over from there.
I know you're here to hear the kids and not us. I'm gonna just flash through a few photos to kind of show what was happening. So for the robot work, they had to, they had these missions they had to solve. They built attachments. They built a base robot to move around the board and they did a lot of programming. And then innovation project again was separate and they did a lot of brainstorming and very late in the season, they actually did a lot of testing and building and prototyping. And again, core values was a quarter of their score and a big part of that is communicating to other teams and just working well together and being really positive. So in the interest of time, I'm gonna skip through this, but they went to regionals. Privilege of going to Worlds in Houston. So in Houston, the team represented RMS and a big part of it was sharing their ideas. So they had a booth where they had to describe their project to both younger kids and to adults. And actually, the Navy was one of the vendors there showing their work and they came by many times because their display model at their booth of an underwater nuclear powered submarine was very much like the team's model. So they're gonna tell you about that in a minute. Yeah, and they worked hard as a team in the robot game. So thank you for their support, Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation, Hypertherm and RMS and school board. So you're here to hear them. So I'm gonna stop now. And they're not gonna do their whole full robot presentation because it's easier to just see what it's about. So we're gonna just play a couple of videos and they're gonna describe a few of the things of how the robot worked and what the game was about. And then they're gonna present their innovation project. So I'm just gonna hit play and you guys can kind of talk about it a little bit.
Okay, so this is the Bang Hammer. It's a mission designed to solve this, which is hitting that thing down and launching the sharks. It was a simple up and down motion and it was the first mission we solved. So it was a pretty big deal. It was very heavy and clumsy, but it was a pretty great.
We used to no, missions to solve multiple missions in one go without just doing the shark. So it saved a lot of time, twenty three seconds for a hundred and ten points while solving the mask.
This is the Kraken mission. You have to lift a mask and pull a chest out from like a kraken's mouth. So it's really difficult to keep the kraken up while you're trying to grab the chest. So I created a mission with guide rails, which were a later addition because the wasn't centering properly. And then also a top bar to stop the thing from rotating and flipping over.
We use this run to sweep up all the loose pieces on the board as you can see right here in order so later missions would not fail and get
So this was used for a bunch of pieces in one boat. So you need like a suspension system and you also solve two missions at once, opening up those ports.
This is a picture or video of one of our pit stops. We practiced our pit stops a lot because if you have a faster pit stop, you can switch between attachments faster and do more mission. We watched videos of F1 and NASCAR pit stops to try to get inspiration for our own. And we also did a lot of practice.
So this is one of our test runs on a code we're making to get the robot from one side to the other while doing some different missions along the way. So you can see it's not go very well. We had a lot of tests like that and some tests that went well and we eventually got to a good plan. On the bright side of the mission board, we coded this very complicated movement. Took us a lot of tries to get and we ended up doing two missions there. Near the end of the season, we got this mission, which requires really delicate movements and we attempted to move the boat. We didn't end up doing it.
So do you guys wanna do your innovation?
Alright. Alright, so we are the robotic rays. We're from RMS. Our names are
Wyatt.
Ezra.
Rafa.
Leon.
Remy.
Keam.
Otto.
And Clam.
We're here to show you our innovation project site.
Um, the problem, the primary issue that we are trying to solve is the lack of extended travel among autonomous underwater vehicles. The range of all of these vehicles is certainly limited by their battery life, which means sometimes they can't get to the areas that they want them to. And some places remain completely unrecorded. In order to make these AV travel as far as we want them to, we would need a continued supply of power. And without sufficient energy onboard that AV, there's limitations to the amount of data we can gather.
The problem has changed quite a bit over the season. We knew there was a lack of data and understanding about the ocean. First, we talked to two marine biologists about the data we might want to collect. Next, we talked to a saturation diver who told us information on which materials and sensors will work underwater. Then we spoke to an AUV engineer from MIT. He helped us narrow down our problem to go on the lack of range in AUVs.
We focused on battery life because that is the main limiting factor. We decided to use fuel cells to return on hydrogen and oxygen inside the grill. Carrying the hydrogen is very inefficient, so we sought to find other methods to acquire it. We found a paper written by a group of MIT scientists who found a cost efficient way to get hydrogen from sea water reacting to aluminum and we could put that aluminum on board. So with enough of those reactants, we can make virtually unlimited hydrogen and extend the travel range of Poseidon significantly. So with a large supply of aluminum and a tank of oxygen, our AUV Poseidon is ready to go anywhere.
So we did a video on Alka Kaiser. So aluminum reacts with salt water to produce hydrogen, but oxidizing the process. So the aluminum is coated in a UTEC galium mixture, which is roughly one part indium, three parts gallium. And that helps it from to stop oxidizing and it still lets it react to the water. Through the testing, we the testing, we found that the more of it that is on, the more of the UTEC gallium that is on aluminum, it makes the thing more potent, the reaction. And here's a little bit of our UTEC galium coated aluminum. So pass it around. The coffee is added because it is a cost effective way to get a catalyst called imidazole. Imidazole is greatly needed because it's heated direction twenty four times and we did a couple of tests and as you may be able to see, it's left beautiful. The more imidazole we added, it made it more friendly and lasts longer and faster.
We estimated with seventy watts of power propulsion sensing systems and with a large amount of aluminum and we extend them to use oxygen, which we can easily fit in a robot. We're gonna earn Poseidon for two weeks without stopping moving at five twelve per hour. This means that we could travel roughly up to sixteen hundred kilometers, whereas most AVs can travel ten to twenty. The solution to our project has come through many phases and iterations. Once we secured our problem, we came up with ideas for a solution and started looking for feedback. Professor of Chemistry talked to us about adding a nano filter to the robot. We attended a lecture at Dartmouth from a member of Team Iceland. We're launching AVs right now. From there, we developed concept part regionals. We have a three, we made a three D model for states, which we do not have with us today. But for Worlds, we constructed this partially functioning model, Poseidon.
So the process of making the electricity starts here with the pump. It pumps in sea water from outside and it goes into the reaction chamber where the catalyst and the fuel of the aluminum are added. And then they react to generate the hydrogen. Then the hydrogen is carried over to the fuel cell here and is mixed with the stored oxygen to generate power, which powers things like the motor and the computer and stuff.
This project will definitely help with the collection of data about the ocean by extending the operating range of each mission. There's so much data and information that we don't have, such as mapping the ocean floor. The ocean floor is only twenty five percent documented. And deploying Poseidon could really assist with this like mapping as well as gather more data like water, salinity and temperature. So thank you for listening to our innovation project, Poseidon.
There's a good currency trade pins.
A couple of us got a couple hundred from like just going around and collecting a pin from like each
Thank you, guys. Does anyone in, any board members, members that have questions for robotics team or coaches?
We have some examples of other teams' pins. This is the Vermont team's pin. We talked to them. In this team, this is
We'll say, but the pins are really cool because it gives you reason to talk to people. Otto, I don't know how many pins you ended up with, but he was weighed down with like ten what is really neat because you get to talk to people from all over the world. And one thing we didn't mention is one of the neat things they do at Worlds is they they'll pair you with an international team. And then they give you new challenges. And so we got paired with a French team where we had to solve all these new robot Lego robot challenges in a short amount of time, which is really neat for the team to participate.
We had to like pass the language barrier and yeah, Google Translate. It was really cool to work with new people and solve new missions.
I'm super impressed. I've never been able to do something like this in my senior age. I'm really curious where the girls are.
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was we all, we were all friends with each other. So we decided, hey, let's join the robotics team.
There was, what? Two other teams and the other ones had some girls.
Fast on the training. Any other questions for these guys? Are all of you, are there any sixth graders on the team? Is that a coincidence or is that?
Most teams sort of like kind of provided by grade a little bit. There was a ton of sixth graders.
So actually, there was another sixth grade team that did. There was a team that was mostly six graders, maybe six.
It was six and seventh graders.
Six and seventh. Yeah, there were some other teams that made mistakes and they were like, yeah, submarines.
I will say this, this year they tried to break him up by, by grade. This could be in classes together and have the same schedules. That was new to this year and it just so happened that we have all plays.
Does anyone else want pins?
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you all so much. This was great.
For coming to board loves. Thank you, North and Burn Foundation, Jack and Dorothy Byrne. And you are in no obligation to stay, although you're welcome to if you want to. You guys have plenty of things to do. So thanks y'all. And we'll hear next. We do have a high school council rep presentation between these two things. Ian, Ella, anything you want to report?
Well, hi, I'm Ian. I'm going to be a sophomore next year, but currently I'm a freshman. And I just got elected onto council this year and then I got elected on to Dresden School Board Representative also this year. And recently in council, we passed a motion where there was an at-large representative tie with me and like some other over high school. And to solve that issue, we passed a bylaw where it said that we could have thirteen at-large representatives if
Anything else, proceed? Have questions for Ian? Thank you, Ian. Welcome. Then we'll move on to the high school vignette about the balloon project. You guys want to come on up in similar format? So folks will look in at the county, you'll see we have two vignettes tonight and we're meeting next week, as you heard from Lisa earlier. Next week we'll have the principal's reports. This should be reported live on.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Levine and I teach chemistry here and also the seven classes, wood, metal, CAD and the engineering class TACT. And I also do mentoring for the balloon team. Two years ago, we were one of fifty three schools selected to participate in the two eclipses. And out of those fifty three schools, there were only five high schools. Only two of them were public high schools and we were the public high school in East Coast. And we were so far over our heads. Really just thrown into the deep end. I had never flown a high altitude balloon before, but I've learned a ton and it's been fun exploring it with the students. What I have here is Gus, Matilda and Chris, and we're gonna explain where we've come from and what we're doing now. But this is a nice photo because it's this legacy piece now. This was the originally Eclipse team and has some of those seniors graduated and went off to do more with aerospace and engineering. We now have a new group coming in and we are going to continue to expand that.
Yeah, some of the goals for our specific team is just engage all students in science research and get our hands on real world data that we're collecting ourselves, which is super, super cool. And also providing of the student outreach opportunities to get more people involved in science and get more people going. So for example, I joined this team because I was really into scientific research and I found this opportunity. This is amazing.
So as I mentioned, we, it's not off the shelf stuff. It wasn't like NASA said, here, go fly this and put it together. We've assembled everything. I have taught the kids about the stats. So the balloons are latex balloon. They have a certain size. We have a certain weight limitation to get them up. The best term I've learned so far, that balloons have to be digestible. If they have to go through an airplane engine, it'll be perfectly fine. Not our balloon, but the airplane. And part of this experiment, we had to, this is something for Eclipse. No one had ever done this, but we were trying to stream real time data. So we sent cameras out that we made with raspberry pies and we had a ditch. You can't see it here, but it's a dish about this big that we would aim. And you know, you're talking one or two degrees because our balloons go about ninety thousand feet, eighteen miles up. And so we're streaming data real time. This was us building that assembly to stream the data. And then there's lots of testing. There's lots of testing of it. So we spent a lot of time with this new project. We started in November and already we've got a hundred and thirty hours in our new equipment. And that's all volunteer. We show it downstairs on Saturdays and I feed them pizza and make the science stuff. It's a great payback. You can see here, we're into learning machines, learning how to code, learning how to problem solve, learning how to break things and feel quickly and move forward.
Okay, so our first launch was from Randolph, New Hampshire. And we got our balloon to ninety six thousand feet, which is eighteen miles. And then it did land in a tree, which is not ideal. We were able to go to down with a slingshot, so an overall success. And then for the annular eclipse in Oregon, we flew out and launched. An annular eclipse is like a total solar eclipse, except the moon is further away. So it doesn't produce the, it doesn't produce the, like the overall dark effect. Unfortunately, our balloon popped too soon, so we didn't get all the data we wanted, but we were able to assemble our, before we launched our balloon at Reynolds High School. So we got to show the students kind of what we did and do outreach in that way. This is a photo that one of our graduating members, Kavi Patel, took. It's a representation of gravity waves, which is one of the things that we're researching. So this was taken during the eclipse. Um, so this was taken during the eclipse and you can see the lines of clouds are the bottom of the gravity waves where the um liquid has condensed. Um, for the total solar eclipse in April, um, we launched from Rouse's Point, New York. Um, and we actually got to do this like group of people gathered around us in this field when we were launching. So we got to explain what we were doing and um, talk about like the balloon while they while we were watching as a nice audience. Um, and then this is a map of our flight travel. Um, there were a lot of teams that were launching during this time, so that there's us, so you can see that there is a whole bunch of groups. Um, and then we got some really good data from this launch. Um, you can see here's like some of our altitude and velocity. Uh, and yeah, it was an overall great success.
So then, as uh, in the fall of uh, twenty twenty four, we were offered the opportunity by NASA along with twenty-three other teams out of the fifty that participated in the solar eclipse. Uh, we were the only public high school to be selected. And we we were uh, offered the opportunity to observe CMEs are which are um, coronal mass ejections, basically like when the sun spits out a bunch of stuff. Right now, this was a great time to start observing them because we are in the middle of a solar maximum, which happens every eleven years. And so this is why they want to get all this data right now. I think that's the best time to get it.
Yeah, um, here's a little map of our latest flight. Uh, as you can see, we went up to eighty-seven thousand feet. This flight was specifically a shakedown of some of the equipment that we would be using to uh, track uh, coronal mass ejections uh, because we're measuring radiation. Um, and that's not Washington for scale, so it's honestly really cool how high we get to go.
Can we miss late NASA coma like thirty feet? Worth of work. We'd have just gone down in the lake, but yeah, landed on some deck.
Um, and the really great thing about this launch is that uh, our data in the top left and the um, accepted data in the bottom right uh, for the radiation profile of a flight like this. Um, we're matching pretty well, other than some sensor anomalies. Um, and we were able to see the the peaks, the known in the center of the community as the buzzer maximum um, that we were looking for, uh, which is a really great sign. And right now we are currently awaiting a coronal mass ejection to come our way so that we can get the real.
That's, you know, one of the things is not only do you have five different radiation sensors, one of them is from Codnik, what did MIT where we had to assemble it all and solder the boards and I got to print my first computer board, which I'd never done before. But once you have the data, the machines don't, the sensors don't talk to each other. So then you have to go through and tell them, how do I extract data? How do we date stamp it? And and so it's not, once again, I don't do this stuff. This is something I bring to the team and we sit around and we hack at it and we contact researchers out there and we have a community that we go to. Um, and then we figure it out. And and so something like that for us is like we did it. You know, that's just awesome. Um, we're now beginning to pivot a little bit because we are not sure in the current climate what NASA is going to be doing. So we're wondering, how can we involve more of our community? And so we're teaming up with the biotech class here at the high school. And this test tube right here has um, halophiles. They're a type of bacteria that you find in extreme places, mostly salt lakes. When you see pictures of Africa and the bright red lakes, that's a lot of halophiles. And it turns out that when they're exposed to radiation, they'll turn from that red color to white. And we sent this one up on our last flight and it worked. It turned white. That experiment next week did, as you can tell. The test tube cracked. We got some great footage of it blowing out as it came out down. I think it's sixty-five degrees up there and it was supposed to be a bubble tube. I read about bubble tubes and it's half water, half blistering, a little bit of uh, dish soap and it's mixed. And you should be able to capture data on muons, which are cosmic rays. Well, by the way, cosmic rays are energy from dead stars, which I think is fascinating, collecting energy on. So right now, our, we're going to drop the bubble thing. I don't think that's going to work for us and focus more on the halo bacteria. And the biotech class will be able to culture account colonies. They'll be able to put it through a mass spec twenty-one and look at absorption rates. And also, we think now we'll be able to run some DNA profiles on it too. Um, and just look at it. And no one's flown any halo files during a CME. So we're pretty excited, hoping they have the opportunity to do that. We're also reaching out to some collaborators and this was just for fun. But um, I stumbled upon this woodworker, since I teach woodworking downstairs. And um, he has been trying to for the last year to get a rocket to fly his UFO. I cannot fly a rocket, but I can get it up to ninety thousand feet for you. And he said, let's do it. And so we had to build the camera array to do this. Because we didn't have that setup. So it's like, how do you build an array to capture the whole video of it? And so he sent the UFO. We spent time and we figured out the array and and so now that we, that's what we took advantage of for the halo bacteria and also for the UFO. So we'll send up photos of you, to be honest. Um, my CAP students, engineering class downstairs, um, decided to, under my suggestion, strong suggestion, to participate in cubes in space where we designed experiments, novel experiments that we then competed internationally to get them flown on a sounding rocket by NASA. And we put together five experiments and all five got selected. And so three of them are going up in June on a sounding rocket and two are going up on a long-term balloon that'll get up there for four or five months, which we can't do. Our school's up and comes down in a day. One of the students was so excited about this and her family really got into it. And when they knew they were selected, they looked at where they were launching a sounding rocket and now they're planning a family trip down to Virginia to watch the monster rocket. And then we'll get them back um in in June. And so the idea is that next year's CAP set up will start by processing the data and then build them up for, once again, launching rockets. But this gave me the experience of saying, we could do this with middle school. I mean, I can get things in ninety thousand feet. So why couldn't we do this with high school experiments here? Or start around area middle schools and say, look, we can come to you. I can give you the engineering constraints. We will fly it. You come to the launch with us. We'll launch it. We'll retrieve it because retrieval is just as much fun. But that's the idea. Once again, an outreach to how can we connect to the community? Um, we're also partnering with Dr. Wicks. Um, she has two experiments. She's a material chemist. She's working at Dartmouth. Now she's working at Northeastern and we've been written into two of her grants. And she was really interested in microgravity and I didn't know if I could achieve microgravity. But it turned out on our last flight that when the balloon popped with a free fall and we experienced microgravity here for twenty-six seconds. I think I can extend it. We have to delay the balloon. Plus and minus to that, but we have to do our, delay our parachute opening. Um, we did achieve it in Oregon. Matilda didn't tell you about that, but even though the balloon popped, our our shoe got tangled. And so we hit terminal velocity and luckily it was a deskless place in Oregon where we impacted our balloon. We are working with a number of agencies now, um, not only that Hanover and the Hanover School Board, but uh, the New Hampshire Space Grant, the Vermont Space Grant, the American Astronomical Society. We took a crew down there last year to partake in a board and and present what we were doing. We're going to the um, high altitude academic conference in June. Five students are going. Um, the Civil Air Patrol wants us to help them sort of have a team. And so we're really trying to reach out and say, what can we do? There are very few high schools that fly high altitude balloons. And so it's just, yeah, it's awesome. And this is our team and uh, some of our logos we come up with.
Amazing.
Thank you for supporting us.
Well, Chris and team, uh, any questions for them? Neil?
Um, actually for both teams, I'm just curious, like, how important is the hands-on aspect of this to the learning? Because this strikes, I mean, this is, this is different than sitting in a classroom and getting instructed. Right? And uh, maybe more towards the students. Do you learn better in this environment versus sitting at a desk and getting lectures?
Well, I feel like for some things, it's really frustrating because you're learning slower because you don't have access, like, I know you have a course to just like consolidate the material and like telling you what you need to know. But like, at the same time, you get like the full experience of like finding information, like if you don't like know something, you have to like not only learn it, but find out where to learn it, which I think is like more real world. And so I think it's like a good way to prepare you, especially if you want to do a career in like science like this.
Yeah, and I think tying off to that, I think it's really, uh, uh, two, two really separate ways of learning that really pulled together at the end of the day, because you know, you're sitting in your classes, you're learning the theoretical stuff in context. But until you really get your hands on and you really dig into that, then you really feel what it is like to become, you know, a research scientist. And um, I think it's definitely given my myself personally and I, I think definitely other members of the team as well, an opportunity to delve into this uh, before before we go off to college and work and whatnot, you know, and I'm super, super thankful of Mr. Levine in giving us this opportunity.
Yeah, just briefly out of here on, it takes a lot of a lot more, I think, commitment and focus in whatever you're doing to to do this hands-on thing as opposed to learning it in a classroom and like they said, like having having the documents that they're already giving you and having this whole stuff already given to you compared to making it yourself. And it's just, it's this really, so you have to be committed to what you're doing, but if you are, it's so much more valuable than just learning it in a classroom.
From my perspective, I think, I'm excited to see where they go. You know, I'm watching the seniors now graduate and where are they going to take it? What are they going to do? I mean, this is just, it's an opportunity to learn how to problem solve, whether they continue down the NASA or high altitude balloon path. But what they take away from them is how to solve a problem. And so watching them come in, like I've watched in the last two years. And initially, uh, there was a student who had no idea and he came right up and he, I do not know anything about coding. I don't know what I'm doing. And now when new members come in, he instantly folds them under his arm and he's explaining things and showing them. And it it's just, that's that's fascinating and just watching what they can do.
I just have a question. Do you, are you guys familiar with um, Jay Bucky, who's a former NASA astronaut?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He actually presented to Derka in the um, astrophysical community up there. Um, they were a lot of fun. But that's the chance they blew up. Um, they're currently launching in Antarctica, so that'd be awesome. Or Tunisia. The the ultimate would be, uh, I think it's twenty twenty-seven. The next total eclipse that year goes over the pyramids. So like, that's.
I do have one other question. Matilda, I noticed that you're one of two girls on this group. So what would you suggest for increasing the numbers of girls who are in, involved in this project?
I mean, I feel like a lot of these things start from a really young age. Like, I remember in sixth grade, I was on a robotics team and it was just like me and this other girl. And like, we were always like put together on the same project, so we never really got to like, it never, it almost didn't feel like this is at line, like that you got to like kind of like collaborate between like both genders. And so I think that like, now that like everyone's older, like like, you haven't like, you're kind of starting into this with with less experience, like a lot, I think there's fewer girls who have experience in robotics while like, there's like younger, like a lot of the like guys, I think, start younger. And so I think that like encouraging it in like middle school, elementary school, if there are programs is where it's really important because like I'll talk to my friends and I'll be like, it's really fun. You should try it. And they'll be like, I have no idea like anything about robotics. And I'm like, I feel like it's just like encouraging girls to start like younger would be my recommendation.
Thanks for making us proud. All of you. Really amazing.
And we live in an amazing community. Thank you so much. Jess, can you follow that one? Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. My kids were going to join the coding and then they shut down that robotics club on the fire road. We'll talk.
Wow, okay. We traveled. So this is just about that high school, um, did a trip during, over April break and a few days before to China. And how this all came about is um, in twenty twenty-three, Xi Jinping announced this program where he went to bring fifty thousand Americans to China to have cross-cultural connections and increase um, educational experience. So fifty thousand students. Um, and so Juwan, who's in the back here, um, you know, brought it to our attention. And so the first thing we did was vet it. So Julie called around to some other high schools and said, fair. And I was like, has anyone done this? And what was this like? And people said, yes. Um, they had done it. They already had it right up in the Chicago Tribune. Um, and so then after that, um, we ran it through the, if you don't know, the high school before COVID, when we did long-term field trips that traveled outside March Intensive had a form that I went and had to fill out. And then no one really traveled, but that came back and we got to do that form as our reintroduction to it and it goes through. Um, if this time it went through CPP, but normally goes through coordinators. Um, so we did that and it got approved by staff to run this. Um, so once we had permission, um, we reached out to the embassy in New York who matched us with a school in Beijing. Um, and so the school in, and so this whole mission is this cross-cultural exchange. So the school we were matched with is the Beijing National Day School. And it is actually near where Juwan grew up. And it's an interesting school because it is a public high school of five thousand students. Uh, they have to pass an entrance exam to get in, so it's one of the elite schools in uh, China and in Beijing. Um, and then within that, there's a separate international school that's much smaller. And that's really where we were hosted and matched with. And within that international school, um, they have three programs. They have an AP ID and an A-level program. And within that, even though this is a public school, those students actually pay twenty thousand dollars a year to attend that international school. So um, these students are really going to the same colleges our kids are going to. So for example, the first day we showed up, one of our students is playing. We all were playing, playing sports. Our student was making, you know, conversation and this student said, oh, I got into Wake Forest. And our student said, oh, North Carolina is lovely. And that student said, yeah, but it's a red state. I don't know if I'm going to go. So um, it's very much, and this is their college counseling center. It'll be their Dartmouth. There's my college. You might recognize some of your own. Um, so these are, it was a very good fit for our students. Um, they have um, a lot of student choice at this school. Um, they have a council-esque kind of situation. So every year the students get to choose a project they do. They're very proud of their gym, which they had gotten to design um, and bring to fruition as part of the project. So it's uh, it was a great match um, for us. So the student experience, our students were matched with host families um, where they stayed. And so every student had kind of a different experience depending on what they were doing. The first weekend we were there, there were high wind mornings that hadn't happened in like ten years. So some families didn't go out at all and some braved the winds. They were quite significant. But uh, they ended up spending uh, what, five nights with their, six nights with their host families. Um, and then the other nights when we were in Beijing and then the other nights we were in Xi'an. So when we were in the school and in classrooms, we were traveling and seeing sights. So we were there for ten days, which is really nine because you have to get there. Um, and it was quite packed. So they had a tour company who would take us around to all these sites with a very knowledgeable tour guide. So for example, in Xi'an, we went to the National Museum and it was ninety-five degrees in Xi'an and the museum was at least ninety. Um, and at the end, the tour guides like went out of their way to say how wonderful our students were, that they were most engaged students, that they asked the most questions. And I mean, we were melting. So to show like, the students were so interested. Um, it was just an amazing experience. So everywhere we went, it was just incredibly informative. We were on the bus, we were learning. We were in the places we were learning. Um, everywhere we went. And then the school arranged a number of cultural experiences from tea ceremony ceremonies to making our own tarot card warriors. We had this uh, interesting photo shoot where we got dressed up. There's a photo in the case if you want to see that. Uh, learned about opera and noodle making. Um, this is not the official photo shoot. This was just a, a normal dinner uh, experience. Um, so kind of our observations of we remember April. Uh, right before we left, we, uh, the chaperones, so Matt Prince, uh, my husband, Eric Cony, Juwan, and I were the chaperones. We had great communication with this school. We felt very comfortable with what we were going into. We had great communication with this school. We felt very comfortable with what we were going into. But of course, these were headlines leading up to the trip, right? And we were like, oh, could we not have a tariff war on the day we are leaving? Um and so we were kind of wondering what we were going to walk into um having this kind of in our background. And what we realized when we got there was um it was very welcoming. Um and these two articles also came out during that time and I highly recommend people read them. By Thomas Friedman. He was also interviewed on the Ezra Klein Show. Because uh people, there were no Americans there. We were the Americans there. And it's, that is kind of a sad statement, I think. Um and when we left, it wasn't just us who felt like this felt very important, I would say, being there. And our students, I think, felt that too, that they made really strong connections in these host families. Um and on the final night, we were there, we had a dinner and we had our parting remarks. And a host father got up and he spoke through translation with his son. And he clearly was a member of the government. And he said, you know, this was an experience where he was very nervous about hosting an American student. And I was like, kind of fair to invite a teenager into your house of any culture. But he said, you know, um our two countries are the greatest superpowers in the world. And our children are going into a most promising future and we want the best for both of our students. And we need more of this. And he sincerely thanked the Beijing National Day School. And he was quite sincere in his remarks and he felt exactly how all of our chaperones, all the teachers from Beijing National Day School felt. That we need more opportunities for our students to connect, that this was an incredible experience for all of our students who got to go. Um and so some of our, and our feeling kind of coming back is that we would really love to partner with the Beijing National Day School to start an actual exchange program, the YES program. Um we can't actually partner with them again. We would have to go and we would get another school in China. Um the pro is it's the Chinese government supplements some of the costs on the ground. We just paid to get there. However, when we got there, it turned, we have the bill for how much it costs there. And it wasn't a significant amount of money for while we were there. It would increase the cost of going by maybe three hundred dollars a student. Um and the school we just connected with on a philosophical level, uh we have strong relationships. Uh we can also, if you have an exchange, grow of money where you can have scholarships where we can't with the other program because it's only going to last for a few more years. Um and so that's something that we're very interested in trying to do. And we presented to staff saying the same thing. It was an amazing trip. I don't know. Anything to add? Other chaperones in the audience?
Also, I I have a good question along the line. I would echo the same comments that Jess made. Also, my son's sophomore um came along and I've been leading trips for throughout my career. And I've had parents come back to me and say, oh, you know, my my child has been changed by this experience. And you know, to get to witness that firsthand with my own son, I think his sort of perspective on the world is so much broader. His confidence to sort of navigate uh you know, different sets of cultural circumstances. He's talking about wanting to do a save up for a trip to Tokyo after he graduates. And I just think he sees the world as a more expansive and uh place and and just the potential that comes with, even though headlines are bad and relationships between governments might be one thing, but relationships between people can be really strong. So I think that was a message that a lot of students felt during that trip because the host families, they treated our kids remarkably well. I think their hospitality was was truly amazing.
It was really amazing. Anyway, it was an amazing experience.
Questions from board members? I'll 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 take, I'll do one. So yeah, Jess, you are okay.
Go for it.
So for a trip with this man, it's an incredible opportunity. How was it decided which students and which chaperones would be applicable to go?
Well, chaperones is sort of like Juwan knows me and said, will you help me? So I guess chaperones is sort of just like who is willing uh within the school um at that point. We would, when we were on the trip, we were expanding, like who else could benefit, who else could bring it into their curriculum? Was our conversation while we were there. Um so for chaperones, that was part of our conversation. Like if we were to keep doing it, who who would make sense in our school to bring things in? Like we were spitballing like, oh, the art teacher would make complete sense. This is amazing. This would make so much sense to have someone to bring into their curriculum since we don't offer the language. For students, uh this was a kind of a more last-minute thing. It always gets our, this one was advertised through Schoology and through the parents weekly. Um it was a short turnaround due to we had to get uh these sons very quickly. So it wasn't as long, it advertised as long. So then it became whoever gave us a complete packet first. You had to have a valid passport that was not expired in any way, shape or form and a deposit. So and then it came down to seniority and who had it first. And that's why if you see our list, it's very, there are a lot of ninth graders and like so and a lot of different varying ages in this one.
Any other questions?
I can't say that's how every trip went. This was maybe a very unusual way to do it because there was just a short window of turnaround on this trip. And so some people I know were like, we didn't know about it. And I was like, Per, if your child does not read Schoology announcements or you have marked the consult weekly as spam, which some people Yeah, you might not have seen it. And I know there's a lot of email everyone gets. I don't read it every week and I work here, sorry Julie. But um so yeah, I mean normally there is more notice and goes out in classes and things, but I can't speak for all.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you all for coming and giving us that information. We appreciate it. Probably a great opportunity. Everyone just come on back and then Renato, get too comfortable. You wanna come out and tell us about how March Intensive looks?
All right. Hello, everybody. Uh my name is Matt Prince and I'm a social studies teacher here at Hanover High School. I'm also responsible for running the uh March Intensive program. Uh I'm excited that March Intensive celebrated its eighteenth anniversary this year, right? So now it's old as our graduating seniors or older in some cases. Um I see some new faces. So just a reminder that March Intensive was created many years ago to celebrate learning for learning's sake and a stress-free environment, uh to broaden the scope of what's possible, uh the one study we have at our high school, learn in different ways and in different places, uh to build relationships with uh between uh our students and between our staff within the building and also to build relationships with the community and the uh the Upper Valley. So uh that's, that's what the objectives are. Uh our indicators this year seem to suggest that March Intensive remains a very popular program uh with our uh parents and uh students. So for our student data, we surveyed all students afterwards. We got two hundred and forty-two different responses. Um we came in at eighty-eight point nine percent said they would recommend their course to a friend. Uh and eighty-nine point four said that that experience was uh good for them. I will say I'm a little sad that that percentage is about one percent lower than what it was last year. Um it's not statistically all that significant, although I will say that one hiccup we had this year is that the dates of March Intensive coincided with playoffs for hockey and basketball. Uh and I think that was really upsetting to some of our winter athletes. We made a prediction about when we thought would be the best week and it was not. Uh you know, ultimately, we should have had it the uh the the week after. So I do think there was some disappointment for some upperclassmen who, you know, quite didn't have the the same number of options in choose from. Still had a lot of great options, but really close. I think that, you know, that that ballpark of ninety percent remains there. Um parents, actually, we had a hundred and thirty respondents from parents, ninety point three percent reported having a good, their kid had a good experience, nine point seven percent said uh no. Um one thing that we're aware of is that there is always controversy concerning the, you know, the 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 costs that are associated with March Intensive and travel options that are there. Uh we had a question on the parent survey that read, the March Intensive Committee caps the number uh in the cost of distant and regional travel courses, so that families are not asked repeatedly cover the cost of these experiences and ensure that there is sufficient funding for scholarships for students in need. Would you prefer that the March Intensive Committee and the options were um uh sorry, my uh my uh picture, uh forty-two point three percent of parents said they would like to expand the number of distance and regional travel. Forty-six point nine percent said that they would like the percentage to stay the same. And five point four percent of parents said they wanted to see distant and regional travel uh eliminated from the uh the March Intensive program. The other percentage were were various comments. I would say half were actually, when we read them in support of travel in some way, kid or form and half were were probably against that, but I think it remains fairly popular with parents in uh that uh that regard. Moving forward, there are some changes that we're we're looking at. One is I attended a Youth in Action Board meeting uh a few weeks ago and we're looking at the possibility of trying to expand service options within March Intensive. Um some of the ones that we have remain really popular and kids, you know, year after year report good experiences. Uh Youth in Action is looking potentially to to sponsor a class. We're also gonna try to make contact with some charitable organizations in the southern part of the state, see if there's there's more opportunities uh there. We want to look at a uh maybe perhaps devising a cell phone policy or best practices for uh for trips. I think in some ways it can be really helpful and they can be there for emergencies, but also sort of making sure that kids are unplugged, right? And engaged. Um finally, we're we're considering eliminating the independent study option. That's a part of March Intensive. Uh we limited the number. This year, we had nine students that participated in independent study. We made the application uh earlier. Um we do have uh a small number of families, right, that will go and perhaps take a family trip during March Intensive time. And I think sometimes the perception is that sanctioned under March Intensive because of the independent study option. Independent study ones are not family trips. Uh but uh, you know, I it it's a small number of students. And one of the things that we're realizing, one of the big benefits of the program really is the the connections and the relationships that are formed. Uh and although some kids are doing some really interesting things, they're not, they're not taking part of that collective experience that we're sharing together. So the independent study option was actually originally added sixteen years ago, I think by a request from the board to to do that. So I guess we would consult you guys before we would eliminate that as a as a choice. But I, that seems to be the direction that we're, that the the March Intensive Committee uh would uh would would like to go. Uh I will say that uh, you know, the the, as a parent, like once again, I have my two kids that are here and uh March Intensive sort of changed my own summer plans and that I've gotta take the hunter safety education class because my son did the the hunter safety class here for March Intensive and he's determined to go deer hunting now in the uh in the fall. So I I don't want him to go alone, so I have to do that. And my other son, who I've been begging to uh uh go out cross-country skiing with me and never wants to do it. Uh he did the cross-country ski program. We teamed up with the new facility out at uh at Okel. Now he's, you know, we're looking for cross-country skis over the summer. So incidentally, two anecdotal pieces of information that show that our local programs do are uh highly impactful. So I was told to keep it short, so I will stop talking and I will turn it over to you to see if you have any questions.
Thanks, Matt. We appreciate it. Anyone have any questions for Mark Prince? All right, Tara, I've been there.
I was just concerned, I was wondering if you were concerned about the quality of the independent study of the nine folks who did it this cycle?
Yeah, you know, and we, so we had them come back. I want to be careful because it's a small number of students, right? And so I think we speak largely over trends and I would say that some of them were really good and they used their time up really well. Some of the ones, they they reached the bar, but you know, might they have had a more impactful experience? Because I do think that what you learn during March Intensive is important, but I I kind of feel like it's the same thing with like going to a concert. That I experience of doing it collectively with your peers can help to sort of amplify what that experience is. So so it's a little bit of an expat, like we had some kids who did it really well. Um and there was some last time about the concern about the locations. I kept data this year. So we had two that were in Utah, one that was in Syracuse, two that were in Quebec, one that was Hanover, two in Costa Rica and one that was in Georgia. So they sort of spanned uh different geographic uh locations. But but that does, it's a higher percentage of kids who are out of the Upper Valley uh than what's represented in the uh the overall program.
So I I know the board has talked about getting information about the March Intensive at a board meeting earlier. So I thought I would just share that with you as a request for your planning purposes. In part, you know, the presentation at CPP doesn't fit with um, you know, a board meeting schedule. But the other thing is that I noticed, I think a year ago, you started, or at least I think it was a year ago, um identifying the carbon footprint or the, you know, especially for travel purposes. And I think, you know, that the SAU accepted the um sustainability report. And one of the big issues for the students was travel, whether it was on a daily basis to get to school. But I would assume at some point, March Intensive needs to be a part of that conversation too. So I hope you will, when you come back to us as a board, I I it would be really helpful to have that carbon impact as a part of the presentation.
Sure. And it is, it was featured again in the program of studies that the Environmental Club does a a carbon estimate, right? For each of the courses so that kids can make informed choices. Because I think sometimes they have that competing interest in how badly do I want to go and do this? What's the implication on the climate going to be? And so we just want to spread that awareness and and, you know, I do think there sometimes can be competing goals just because, you know, the consequences of, you know, a world and communities that don't necessarily understand each other, have exposure to each other also has costs, right? You know, in terms of conflict. So so it's sort of balancing that. We do want people to make informed decisions. So at a minimum, right, we're going to continue to uh to to use the carbon footprint information in there. Uh in terms of the timing, um the, this is, I think, Ben, I don't know if it's an official policy, but when it was created, it was sort of saying that we'll come with the program of studies. The program of studies takes, you know, about a month and a half to put together at the beginning of the year. Um you know, it goes through the March Intensive Committee and then it goes to CPP and then it comes here. Um so I would say that if there are programmatic change or 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 changes in guidelines, it's not the October meeting. Because at that point, you know, we've put together this program, the study, that's, you know, past boards have approved something similar without dramatic changes, right? Um so so if there are things like different directions, you know, that 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 time, October is, it would be a hard time for us because we've already put all that effort into, yeah.
Right. If I may, well, I I would agree because I know that when it came to the board this past year and it already gone after the students to sign up for courses, so.
I I don't think that that's true, to be honest with you.
I do know it was. I do know that when we saw it as a board.
I I I really don't think that that, and the only way that it would be possible was that it's in the board docs and that's through the board docs. It had gone to CPP and perhaps it didn't, but definitely it wasn't publicized by the March Intensive Committee or by the school or widely dispersed. Um it may be that, yeah, I mean, that that's, I I would, I would feel pretty confident about that too, that that unless it was leaked in some way.
It wasn't about leaking.
Certainly as a committee, we would not release it until the board had said, had put their their stamp on approval on it.
I think a comment.
Yes, please, Gina and then Carrie.
Yeah, um I think two comments are, um I think that this community that we live in is a really special community and it's a very small community. And what I have seen through my kids' participation is is the benefit of them getting outside of this community and do things in this community. But um I think um in terms of their growth and experience and learning and thinking about the China trip that we just heard about, I think there's real value in that. So I hope we can balance the things that we've committed to our sustainability while continuing to maintain the opportunity to give kids the chance to get out of Hanover, which is a very bubbly place that we have here. Um the second piece is um I I just, every time I talk about this program with people who live outside of this community, my my colleagues and friends are so impressed that we do this. And I think there's a tension and a balance of the public school of what we can do and offer financially. But I think this is something that's really distinctive about our school and I hope we think about that as a board when we think about how we can go forward because it's pretty extraordinary what we do. Unplanned.
Hi, I'm Reniu and I do not have big kids. I look at how long is the March Intensive?
The March Intensive is a four-day week, so it runs, uh there's an in-service day on the Monday and then it it there's four days. However, because of the in-service day and because of the weekends on either side, it can be extended to up to nine days. So but they vary in length from four days to the full nine. Occasionally, a a group will leave on the Friday before. Um so it it could in theory be ten, but uh even the distant trips, I think, are a little constrained by budget and trying to keep costs down. So you know, the the trips tend to be seven to to eight days typically.
Awesome. Um and my follow-up question, which I think uh, thinking back to Gina's comment, is obviously it's well received, ninety percent, amazing. I am curious, over time, that ten percent, are there similar themes that you hear as a school without?
You know, it's the, it's it's a, when you read the comments, it's, there's a myriad of different things that come out. And I think that some of it is that it's sometimes we don't get a good match between the student and what the course is. And I think that some of it is that it's sometimes we don't get a good match between the student and what the course is. I think that there are times where the concern I have is that students are, I think, more socially risk averse than they were in the past. And so what they're doing is they're saying, you know, Ian, what are you, what are you signing up for? And they want to be with the ready's. And so they, they sign up for a course that necess, that wasn't necessarily going to be a fit. So we try to encourage them, you know, to, to take risks. And, you know, I think one of the, the comments that we get from kids that I read and, you know, I saw them how they get up and said, they'll say that like, oh, I wasn't excited about this course. Cause I didn't have a lot of friends in it. But I, you know, I ended up meeting a kid I wouldn't have known otherwise because we had the shared interest. So I think as much as we as a community can encourage kids to say, hey, go where your interests are and trust that, you know, that group, you're going to have something in common and the experience itself is going to bring you together. I think we're, we're better for it.
When, here.
Yeah. So this is great. Having seen my kids go through and I hear Gina's thing, I guess I'm always just like, I'm, I, every time this comes up, I just can't get my head around. I really don't know which way to go with it with the wide variation of the programs. And, you know, you might have a junior or senior that put all their eggs in this like travel bucket to go to Rwanda or to go do habitat humanity. And I don't even know, Puerto Rico or something. And then they missed it and they're playing pickleball and hence, which again, it's a great experience. Cause I think there is value to just taking four days after exams and just, you know, doing something else, right? And learning a skill and frankly, that pickleball, they had a great time and they went, I do what your son did skiing. One of my other kids had done the backcountry ski thing. It was awesome. I mean, it was right here local. But then you've got kids that are going all over the world. And I hear you, because at the end of the day, I mean, I, I did this trip to Russia and as a junior and, you know, would have never gone on to Russia. But, so it's just this like push and pull of like, do you somehow make the programs a lot more? You pull on it, they're just like giving kids a chance to be a lifeguard, learn how to ski. Or still giving people the opportunity to travel, travel halfway around the world with all of the other stuff that comes with that, right? As far as the cost and the expense. I, I have an answer. Trust me. Like I'm just like, it's a hard one here and I don't know which way to go with it. But I do think that in general, the March Intensive is, it's just good for our students' mental health, frankly, to kind of just, you know, yeah. Like pickleball, they're friends for them. We can learn a new skill. But you also have this other stuff hangover and I just, it's hard.
Yeah. I mean, I will say that is for this year, we've had a number of juniors who've got spots on distant travel. So if a senior is dead set on a, a specific destination, that, that may not happen. But there will certainly have other distant travel opportunities. And March Intensive isn't the only opportunity for Hanover high school students to travel. There are, you know, curriculum trips, like the kind of trip that we heard about at different times of year that are offered too as well. So I think a lot of, you know, ninth graders and 10th graders are content with their experiences, you know, and they look forward to potentially having that opportunity. I will say, I've said it before, that I'm a big believer this creates opportunities for kids who wouldn't have them otherwise. And we did give out close to $28,000 in scholarships this year, students to help them achieve, you know, get to places where they wouldn't have gone. We have a number of families that are, you know, solid middle class who perhaps they themselves can't take a family trip to one of these destinations, but can afford to send a, you know, a single child to there. So I do think that, you know, I, it, it was the case for me when I was in high school that these types of experiences, you know, generate opportunities and sort of ignited my passion for studying the world. And so it's part of, I think, the, 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 you know, the people on the committee and part of the people I would believe in this. Cause we believe that we're, we're doing that and, you know, creating opportunities for kids who wouldn't have that.
Here, Lisa, then also.
Yeah, I, a couple of comments. In the past, for those of you who are new, a lot of this has been what Garrett just touched on, the equity issue of fabulous versus not fabulous and who has access to that. And I just would continue, I know you all have been working on this, but I would continue to encourage you to orient new parents to the district, that this happens and it's coming and that there are scholarships available and that there are ways for your kids to be financed. Cause I think in this community, it is very hard to be the family that has to ask for help. And so I just want to make sure that, that, that education happens early, sort of like what the kids were saying about robotics. Like the earlier it happens, the easier it is for people to avail themselves of it. And then on the equity issue, a majority of the kids at this school play sports of some sort. And so I know that you, you flagged that you kind of missed the dates in terms of tournaments this year. I would just really encourage you, especially for those juniors and seniors who really wanted to travel and were looking forward to it. And the fact that they had, you know, we're going to have to choose between a championship hockey or basketball game and going to Spain or Italy or wherever they're at. That's just a tough position to put an eighteen-year-old kid or a seventeen-year-old kid in. And so just, you know, being as aware as possible of the calendar for equity purposes. Thanks.
So as some of us have alluded to, this has been kind of an ongoing, we've asked these similar questions for years now. I think it's a fair statement. And you have your survey data. We asked about this in the 2023 cost survey and lots of great opinions. For those who haven't seen it, we asked about it again this year in J C that went out last week. So if you haven't answered that as a parent yet, I, I encourage you to do so. And we're getting all sorts of great data, anything from how dare you even suggest facing anything to how dare you even have this as a concept. And they're, they're not going away. And just to give you a heads up, if you haven't heard, the policy committee's sort of summer project is crafting a March Intensive policy. So we'll probably be reaching out to you and your.
I would love to, love to participate in any way you would.
Patch this out, not necessarily a once and for all sort of thing, but sort of get the ball rolling on what do we want this to be? While that comes, look under the board eventually, then I want to move on to Neil.
Well, and to that point, Ben, like I, on multiple occasions, I have asked the president chair, whether it was you or the prior chair, the chairman for that, for a board level discussion about March Intensive. And nothing has happened yet and we get this presentation and then we get the list of course offerings. And despite multiple requests, we've still not had a board level discussion about this program and I would like to request it yet again.
Yeah. To the policy, working on it also.
But, but I guess my issue with that was, I was never told that that was going on. And does that then replace a board level discussion?
Not necessarily. It's just, it's one of our products that we knew would take a lot of time. We've been dancing about it, like you mentioned, for years. And we realized that policy, what, one or two months ago, that we would have the ability to tackle that this in some detail, including consulting with relevant staff in sort of the summer lull. This policy, the little don't know, actually doesn't stop meeting in the summer. We still meet roughly every two weeks. And that would be a great opportunity for us working at the level of granularity that we typically can't achieve in a meeting like this. Those meetings are public. I'm happy to send those to you in advance if you want to try to attend. And I think we'll see how those meetings will come out. Michael then Garrett and then be mindful of time.
In the absence of the board level discussion that Neil describes, what problems the policy committee trying to solve with March Intensive?
Not speaking for the committee, but a lot of it would be the equity issues, the perceptions, the very real anger about the whole concept. Cause we do get from a steady group of parents who have these concerns, different from board members as well. I think, well, and that's really why we had this question in the ongoing survey, which the results are not out yet. But for what I've seen of early inclinations, there is a lot of dissatisfaction with the concept. But very few people are saying, don't, are saying, get rid of it or more, let's try to work on the equity issues while also maintaining these amazing opportunities. And how do we do that in a fair way? Both kind of was hitting at with the kind of discussion about how are these kids and chaperones and teachers chosen? How is done equitably? How is opportunity and awareness given in a timely, passport accessible manner? And various related issues. Was that a question or something?
I was just gonna add, so I think one of the other things we're talking about is, so chaperones, how we figure out like how to make sure people are trained adequately, rigor. And trying to make sure that there's a system for like finding some kind of like even footing that these can be comparable programs. And then equity, those are the main things that we're talking about.
Garrett, you still have a question?
I was gonna say, I mean, and again, maybe this is a suggestion, I could ask for everyone's opinion. This is before we do much in policy, should we have that board meeting where we actually talk about it and listen? Cause I was kind of thinking, at least from a policy member perspective, more along with Marcelo was saying, it's gonna be, the policies would be a little more blocking and tackling as far as chaperones and rules and just making sure that we've got all the highs, troughs, whatever highs dotted in to use for us. But when you're saying Ben, kind of it also be more, I don't really know how the policy is actually going to start finding the program and limits to help our people travel and cost. I, I don't know, but maybe we want to hear from the board first and get direction on that before. Cause we can craft policy as far as Marcelo was talking about pretty easily without any input. But then with your time about Ben, when you mentioned Lisa, that's gonna be like more kind of our personal opinions than the board direction. Just laying it out there.
Carrie.
I think one of my concerns being so green and so new. And it sounds like many people do have very sad opinions and perhaps personal experiences either from sitting here or from just having your own children go through this. To hear that there is an intensive committee team, I'd be really curious. Like I can't imagine based on the level of thoughtfulness that we've heard just in a few presentations, that this committee hasn't done some pretty deep work about equity and thoughtfulness. And so I think for me, I feel blind having a board discussion without hearing from the people that are like living this and thinking about it so intensely in a way that like, it might be something on our agenda frequently, but it's not like we aren't the people planning it. And I, I think I would really love to hear that before I feel like I could have an informed conversation. And not that my opinion couldn't be different than that, but I just don't, mine will be based on perception as opposed to hearing from people that are in it.
And I'll chime in, that's one of the reasons why Matt comes to us both sort of the board and ask her each year. You come between January, February.
Yeah, I usually come in October, October and then, yeah.
And then kind of before the thinking, the list of projects, we, we approve the projects here by vote, not, you usually one sum vote. And then he tells us how they, they go across. Julie.
So just in terms of dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, just making sure that that policy committee meets with school personnel. Because I think what you hear in a meeting is a small piece. That's what you're saying. And this would be, if we were talking about chemistry program right now, and there was a policy committee meeting about our chemistry program without people who actually run the thing. Because you may decide things in your policy committee that makes it not palatable for us to run it. We might not be able to, you know, you're talking about chaperones, like is there a vetting process? We would know that, like things like that. So just make sure a whole lot of conversation doesn't happen without at least people informing it on the ground who are actually in charge of it and running it. But I'm sure you've thought of that, but like, I just don't want, like the question on the survey, I didn't even get a chance to run by Matt and, or the committee, which is fine. But I just don't want a policy committee to come up with decisions without, it's hard when the people are in the room who are actually doing it. So you want to have the hard conversations and it might not be what we need to hear. But you don't want to make those, you don't want to have those conversations without the people who actually are doing the work.
Right. And just to point out, as, as you know, that policy committee, like all the, like all committees gets the stakeholders in the room before decisions are made. It has outreach programs. We have people come to us all the time, we invite people all the time and we seek out opinions. And so that does not disappear, which is why we came out and heads over. Lisa, then I really need to move on.
Yeah, just a quick, it, there's kind of two parts to this. I mean, there's, there's the question of the people who are making the decisions, are the educators who know what they're doing? The policy is to sort of protect you all. One of the things I will highlight for those that are new is that there are often perceptions in the community, whether true or not, they are strongly held perceptions that some of these projects are vanity projects by community members to get a trip funded so that they can take a group of kids somewhere that includes members of their family and themselves. And so that isn't a really good look for public funds. Now, there is a vetting process, there's all that sort of things happening. And so I think that one of the things I would hope the policy committee is doing is wherever we land on this, in wherever the discussion is, that whatever policy we comes, come up to is helpful to the people that are making the decisions and, and deals with the substance versus perception question, which I don't think you can ever totally address, but we can do a better job. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Let's move on until we are long, we design the rest of the, certainly succinct, we hope. So with that perspective, let's move on to this is part of our discussion. In terms of drafting NHSBA resolutions, the deadline is getting closer, especially accounting for the summer break. If, does anyone have any resolutions they wish to introduce in concept, if not in great detail? Remember, we are no under, under obligation to come up with one, just sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Yes.
Someone just do a overview of what an example?
That is a great suggestion.
Go Jeff. I was just back there. Give me two seconds. So last year, the resolutions, oh, for example, one of them was support for, oh God, these are just my abbreviated notes on them. One was about adding language about nutrition programs to continuing resolution, not adding a cost to local districts, but including nutrition as an issue that was important. They tend to, well, we presented a resolution a couple of years ago about gun safety. We presented a resolution about, as, as a school board, about the DEI law. And we have, over the years, become kind of friendly with members, with progressive members of other school boards like Dover, Oyster River, Lebanon, and have at times worked together to support each other's resolutions, just to follow through afterwards on conversations. We had a school board member from Lebanon come one year to talk about a resolution that Lebanon was bringing forward. And, you know, there was one that was very specific about gun-free zones and it only applied to Concord because of the language. And so it was kind of, the person withdrew it. But what, well, a lot of times they are responses to what the legislature is doing in Concord. And so there, and there's, but there's this narrow window. You have to know about it, get a resolution through by this August deadline. And then October is when the actual representatives from the school boards meet. And before that, we talk in our school board meetings about all the resolutions that are coming up. And I usually recommend, but the board also figures out what they want to do pretty easily. Yeah, Neil? Oh, sorry.
Don't worry, I wasn't gonna say anything until Ben.
Hope for good sir.
So just to piggyback off of what Deb said, so the New Hampshire School Boards Association is a support and an advocacy organization for school boards in the state of Vermont, right? And one of the ways that they determine what their positions are as representatives of all of us is through the resolution process. And resolutions come from member school boards like us. And we send them to NHSBA for consideration, what they call their delegate assembly. And that's a meeting where they get representatives from all, or they hope to get representatives from all school boards from the state to meet and vote on these resolutions. And if the resolution passes typically with, I believe it's a two-thirds margin, then they become an official position of NHSBA. So that then, for example, when the legislature is doing something screwy and they call on NHSBA for like, what is your position on X? Then NHSBA goes back and they take, well, do we have a resolution on this? It's been passed by our organization. And that's in large part how they determine a lot of the advocacy work that they do. My question specifically for Deb though, is given some of the shenanigans that's going on in the legislature, are there resolutions that have come to mind for you that we might ought to get out to folks? I'm thinking like funding, tuitioning, those sorts of, yeah, those sorts of things that we might ought to get out on.
There, there, oh, there are. I mean, those are exactly the issues. I haven't crafted anything to bring to you and I certainly can on all of those. Probably what I would do is turn to my, my group of buddies on the other school boards and say, can we put our heads together and come up with some of this? I, I do think that the New Hampshire School Board Association is, has become increasingly very risk averse. And, and not always happy about passing these resolutions. But the group that has been promoting them has been very strong. the group that has been promoting them has been very strong uh, uh, in their opinions at the conference and often sways other school board members. Um, one that a teacher here at the high school brought to me this past week was a repeat of a resolution that came up two years ago about weather related conditions that could prompt schools to close that weren't snow related, but heat related. And that got a lot of conversation two years ago, but don't think it passed.
And Jay.
I was gonna say, given that the deadline for submitting proposals is four P M, August first, you got your next meeting, unless you call a special one.
Yeah.
Which is next Tuesday. So yeah, so if you have a, if someone has a concrete idea, you don't have to write it. What we typically do in previous years is if there is a consensus of something we want to support and initiate on, because we don't know what resolutions the other districts will have. Sometimes there's alignment and they inflate, sometimes they don't. Is we, the chair designates one person, historically, it's been our rep, in this case Deb, to craft language that we would then support. So we can have a more detailed conversation about this next week.
Cool, okay.
Deb, I am happy to help with.
Thanks.
Okay. Deb, how do you want us, uh, sorry. How do you want us to handle that? Do you want us to just email you with ideas or just point them right now?
Oh, absolutely. I've got book banning.
Book banning, yeah.
Open enrollment vouchers. What was, there was a fourth.
I don't know, something about, I'm thinking about what Harvard's doing. And, um, and our role as like educating residents and citizens of the, of the, right, the country. And so I'm wondering about a resolution that could be about recognizing authoritarian regimes, about, um, how education is geared towards, um, I don't know. Civic engagement, civil disobedience and civic.
Well, the nice thing about. The nice thing about civic engagement is that we could play off of the death, the recent, yeah, sorry, of Justice Souter, who was a hundred percent. This was his big issue.
Great.
So we can.
Yeah, yeah, awesome, cool.
Um, one last thing, especially for those who haven't noticed it in the survey, is there's stuff moving through the New Hampshire Legislature that would mandate an unfunded NRA created gun safety annual training for all county governors, county governors through twelfth grade through the schools.
Children?
Yeah.
Seriously? One hour, one hour.
It's going to be done annually. I'm assuming some of us may have thoughts on that one.
Well, right, but to the extent that NHSBA does not have a position, that's exactly the purpose of the resolution.
Right, yes, right. Oh, they'll love me.
If you have any, if you have any further ones, please reach out to Deb and we'll hear back, uh, next weekend. Right, shifting to the school board calendar and topic template. And you will see if you click on the attachment that the March intensive annual discussions happened in October and May, as the one just did. And this is where we look in our calendar, see if there's, if it lines up. I believe some of the other boards have already done this.
I just want to point out, and I think we noticed this when we talked about the calendar, but there's a meeting on February twenty eighth, which is the Saturday of school break. And I want to express my one concern about us holding a meeting on a Saturday of school break. I don't think that's appropriate. Because we want people.
And we don't have a choice in the matter, because when we changed the calendar for the vacation schedule, we ran up against an issue in the Dresden compact that that states when we have to have that annual meeting. The annual deliberative session for the budget presentation. So it now needs to happen on that Saturday, the twenty eighth, and that's what I caution board members at the time. When we adopted that calendar, as we were likely going to run into a situation where there's not going to be people around and we not be able to pull together a forum for that meeting.
Can we, and I guess, uh, my question is, I don't understand the rules and the thing that you just called it. So.
Yep, sorry.
Sorry, or whatever the, the count, the compact, thank you. So I guess it, are there ways to have exceptions in a compact or can we, um, appeal for an exception to the compact to hold it on the Monday? Or like, I'm just curious, like, do we have any flexibility or?
Neil, you want to explain the reason why some of us are smiling sadly?
Can you change the compact? Yes. Could we change it in time for this meeting? No, it would require, I believe, that one might require an act of Congress. It, it has to do with our interstate school district status.
Okay.
And the provisions that were set out in the compact as to when the annual deliberative session on the budget needs to occur. And the contact, the compact specifically stated that if the, the date falls on a date that is inclusive of a school break week, that the session has to be moved to that Saturday prior to the school break vacation, I believe, is what it says. I don't have it right in front of me. And so the date that you see in there is kind of prescribed for us and we don't have a whole lot of opportunity to change it now, when we previously voted to accept the recommendation that that school break week fall or fall on what is traditionally that town meeting day.
And we have heard complaints about this calendar in general, both from that calendar survey a couple of months back as well, just anecdotes that some of us have heard.
The school board calendar or the?
The, the general calendar, not, just as a, as a sidebar. Alright, so noting that that date will be problematic, but that there's perhaps nothing we can do about in this timeframe, um, yes.
Uh, there is Wednesday, February seventeenth, followed by Tuesday, February eighteenth. And I'm wondering, which is which, uh, what that should be. What is it?
That's a good point.
Charlie, where are you?
Twenty twenty six.
There's a, Wednesday, February seventeen, Tuesday, February eighteen.
Oh, okay. Hopefully that is just a typo.
Eighteenth is a Wednesday, seventeenth is a Tuesday.
Correct. I may be being obtuse. I just, I think I might be with Gina in like what, uh, so we don't have a quorum because too many people are gone. I guess my, I, I like, I get rules are rules for a reason, but it's June, May. Um, if, if people are out of town and there's not a quorum, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but it could happen. What, how does that shift this? And we wouldn't know that until much later.
Just clarify, you're talking about the February?
Yeah, I'm going back to twenty eighth, but I'm hearing that it's unchangeable.
No.
Because somebody wrote something.
Senior board member, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe for the annual meeting, we don't necessarily need a quorum, because we're not making decisions. It's a presentation to the town.
Right, okay.
So just be the fewer people who are there, the people who are remaining have to talk more, whether that's fair or not, I will.
We can't change that, like the Thursday night before, like Saturday, Thursday, the.
By understanding of the complex discussions.
Could we do it twice? And, yeah, assume that one person's showing up on that day? To, to check.
I would check with legal counsel on that.
That's, it's typical on Thursday and handled with Dresden, do sort of a back to back thing for those who haven't done it. Yeah.
And they're typically, uh, maybe an audience of six.
Yeah. That, that is very different from what happens in normal, is my understanding.
Yes.
But it's typically Thursday, if I can't just do it, I mean, I would think legal counsel.
I, I'm.
Before break, it would just be a Thursday. Normally we would do it the Thursday of break. Now we're just scheduling Thursday before break.
I'm perfectly fine to ask.
Because that day, if we only get six people and we're doing it on a holiday break, it just means that like, now we're really gonna get nobody.
Yeah.
So who's gonna come on Saturday night? I, I know, I just, I just hear you say like, for all of you, like, this is what the compact said. Back in nineteen sixty something, when this district was formed, like, that's what it said.
Jay will, at, at our direction, Jay will see, uh, legal counsel on this particular matter and he will get back to us. Um, I don't know if next week is feasible, but we'll see what we can do. And I suggest we move on. Anything else about the calendar and the template, we see that is problematic. Okay, that, that I'll move along.
Billy noted.
To the reading of policies, switching to my policy chair hat on, I believe all of these have been discussed at the SAU level previously. So, um, for the sake of time, I would suggest that we move on. There's two first readings that were, that were mentioned in policy or actually I see you in the last couple of weeks and several second readings that we have discussed before. Any concerns with that? And I will move along then to the tuition rate. Um, Teresa, is this you?
Yes, um, I've uploaded documents for the, um, the Hanover High School tuition calculation worksheet. Um, I did put some chicken scratch on there. Um, just kind of like a reference guideline for this, um, supporting documents from the MS twenty two, the MS twenty three, and also exhibit three from, um, sorry, on the budget book, sorry about that. Um, so I've attached those. I've also attached the middle school calculation worksheet. Um, I can go through and explain. I'm not sure how in depth you want me to go. Um, but basically, when the committee met and went back and forth on the best way to calculate this out and the tuition was, it was decided that the, really the best option was to use the Vermont method of calculating the tuition. Um, it keeps up with the current cost and expenditures related to the year that we're obviously charging the tuition. Um, using our current, in this reference, we've used the FY twenty six budget that was approved and those were the numbers that we calculated using, um, again, using the MS twenty two, the appropriations. So what you'll get is your, your bottom line on page three. And again, I made reference to where you can find the numbers that I have on my sheet. Um, and it's basically this method takes into account any revenue that we also take in that helps offset the, um, the high school expenditures. The old method that was being used, um, didn't take that into consideration. So it actually um, in some ways made tuition a lot higher when we had, um, worked them out. And we take also into consideration any outlaid debt that we have, um, building aid. Um, and the number of students, um, again, I can go walk down through, or like I said, I've uploaded all the documents. That way it'll give you a time to kind of like kind of go through it and reference. And the tuition rate for the high school this year, um, I know we stated it before, was twenty four thousand four seventy is what we're looking to have approved. And then for the middle school, that one is twenty five nine ten.
Do you mean twenty four four seventy for the high school?
Did I say twenty four?
You said twenty five four seventy, but it's written as twenty four four seven.
Yes, twenty four four seven, you are correct.
Do you, um, any concerns of using the Vermont method with this New Hampshire district or no concerns there?
No, um, and again, because the method that had been the spreadsheet, that's kind of like the RMS method, it doesn't take into account and it, what was happening is the decrease that was happening with the, uh, tuition rate. Because it was not keeping up and it was a lag and, um, using actually like a year's data and backwards a year. So that means we're not keeping up with time and our tuition rate like this year. Um, for next year, the tuition rate was actually gonna decrease using the old method. Um, and the fact that we have quite a few students also coming from Vermont, the, the method was simpler to explain. And so again, I I could sit and walk through the spreadsheet and explain it to somebody much easier than I could the other, any one of us could explain the other one, where it didn't seem like there was any solid as to why we took this number out and why we put this number back in.
Here, did you raise your hand briefly?
I just, I wanted to ask for clarification. Um, the if I recall correctly, the RMS calculation worksheet is the traditional.
Correct, yeah. And I did upload that also, so it looks more like this.
And what we were doing with the change of the Hanover High School was to try and, um, with, with the calculation change, the formula change, was to try and make it more predictable and more reflective of actual costs.
Right.
Because with the old mechanism, which we determined had flaws in it, including like a basic law from the beginning of time when it was first implemented, it was while our expenses were increasing, it was creating, uh, tuition rates that was decreasing.
Correct.
So that was the context. Okay, I just wanted to mention, thank you.
Any other questions on this matter? Note, we are voting on it later tonight. Seeing none, we'll move along to now business requiring action. We're gonna take that, but right now. Uh, air motion for the consent motion for all of the above items. Carrie.
I move to approve items B, C, D, E, F, and G by consent.
Second by. Um, Renee, yeah, discussion.
Did we have covered policies?
We've seen.
We did.
We did. Wow, how did I miss that? So will it, huh?
Any discussion?
All first read though.
All these have been discussed at SAU previously.
Okay. I just, uh, wow, I must have missed it when you, when you brought, but, alright, my bad.
You said it really quick. He was hoping you weren't gonna.
Don't put ideas, alright. Any discussion on any of the motions?
Right, if you have any, if you have any, uh, I mean, sorry, if you have any to discuss, also, I mean, on the policy, like, do you have anything that we want to take back? Um, no, no.
Alright then, all those in favor, we're all here in person. Alright, that is unanimous, knowing Kelly McConnell's absence.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving along to report of the chair. I don't have much report this week. Apart from there is an active survey that Jay sent out, uh, last Thursday that I would, we would really love to hear more answers from everyone. We're at about two hundred and fifty or so at the moment. And we'd love to hear more, um, from parents, so not, not, not. And, um, I will be out for next week's meeting. I might come late, have a different, uh, commitment. So Neil will be chair in his role of vice president. Thank you very much, Neil.
Gender review.
And that's all I have. Um, any Dresden specific committee reports, CSDC, council, property area, third tech, pushing or talked about? Anyone? Deb, Carrie?
I should know the name of, uh, this meeting on Thursday.
So possibly next week or something. Right, Deb, anything besides what we were to discuss?
I do not think so.
Alright, well, I guess we'll move along with the superintendent's report. Jay, here, you may have some news of some kind.
Yeah, uh, based on the essay, you may have a lot to say, but I do, uh, another time would be better, next week. But, um, I, I really wanted to talk mainly about how proud I was of our students and the environmental club who participated in uh, Monchar, at the Monchar Museum, they, they had a, um, an opportunity to showcase student action. Uh, particularly on, on climate and they did such an outstanding job presenting. I mean, if you think about all that they've done, they, they, um, they took the board's charge to come up with a, a SAU Y climate action plan, backed that up with all the data uh, that they collected in order to, to create that plan. And then had, um, it was by invitation, but there are, I think, about eighty people. Linda, correct me if I'm wrong. I think there are about eighty people there from a variety of different, uh, walks of life and fields. Um, with, with strong interests in climate policy. And they were completely engaged. They, we sat at individual tables, um, that were, that were mixed on purpose. And then a student joined each table and then participated in discussion uh, with prompts and generated a bunch of suggestions for implementation, which Linda has kindly, uh, reduced to, uh, a document, which is a draft right now, where I'd share it with you. And, uh, the club is meeting next Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, to, uh, synthesize all that feedback and, and look for the advice that they can actually act on. And so a really successful event and really there was a call in that. And really, there was a call in that, like I'd say consensus to more outreach. What was really cool for me to see is is Mary Cross participated as well and highlighted their work on their super mega composter. And they also provided us with a soup salad and bread dinner that they had procured with the help of local King Arthur and several of our farms. And it was basically a farm-to-table soup dinner, which was which was great too.
And and one additional thing, the apparently both the Ray School and the Richmond School are going to be getting super composters in place.
Yes.
Awesome, very cool. So so that was wonderful. I do have an update I want to make publicly on our status of our lawsuit that we've joined. So the the lawsuit is is moving forward, but there's no date for for any next court appearance. But the ACLU did reach out to all the participating districts about retaining some another law firm, also pro bono. And so I signed the engagement letter for this other law firm. So they're they're stepping up their their preparation for the legal battle that they are sure is coming and and will be represented that way. In in another bit of news that you may have already read about, we we have every year, you probably recall that we do the general program assurances for receiving all of our federal funds. And this year, the state of New Hampshire incorporated a lot of the directives that have come through executive order, dear colleague letters and so forth into the general assurances. And there are several districts that have been sort of waiting it out to see what might happen. And it looks like we're the clock's going to expire and we're going to have to have these these assurances either signed or not signed or responded to differently than we have in the past. And we have two versions of a response that our lawyers have prepared that I wanted to throw out to you. We we either can respond to these assurances as we're required to, just sign off and send them in. We could refuse to sign the assurances on the basis that they've gone far beyond the statutory requirement represented by signing the assurances. And then there's a third option that we could sign off on the assurances but accompanying it with a letter of essentially a letter protesting the changes to the assurances and just asserting that we are in fact abiding by all these federal laws. But we don't see why all these other things have been put in that cede the scope of the federal government's oversight of these programs. And so here we're assigning this but under protest. And so those are the options we have at our disposal.
Which we'll talk about those in non-public, right?
Yeah, yeah. And so then I know we had some members of the public fair rate facility being updated publicly. And that's what I can share.
Linda.
Just asking, is there a time for public comment related to that? I know after our other report.
So it's it's on the agenda, so the public comment would be anytime after the board is done deliberating.
Thank you.
And then last, I I just I just want to thank the board publicly for agreeing to allow me to depart earlier than planned. I can only tell you that I have a very big and growing family that we're really pleased with your decision. And and as am I, and and I I wouldn't be in the position that I'm in to be able to contemplate this were it not for the fact that this board's been so gracious in employing me for the last eight years. And it dawned on me that this is my longest superintendency of of the three that I've had the good fortune to to have. I was in Erie for seven years, it seemed like seventeen. And here, I've been here for eight years, it seemed like two. So interesting, I'll have more to say about that next week, but I just want to thank you all. I would only have done so if I had someone that is capable and professional and outstanding as Robin, who you seem fit to entrust with this job moving forward. So so thank you.
Any question that comes for Jay or for the assistant superintendent letters? Since as we've mentioned, Robin is not here tonight. Or from the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a question or comment from superintendent?
Um, Linda Dante, North Vermont, also the council exec. I wasn't sure where to bring this to the board's attention. Some of you know, Deb knows about the council resolution that was passed, the student affirmation resolution. And the reason I bring it up here is you hopefully have a copy. A copy of motions were sent to all of you. But in in writing that motion, it came out of the council. A motion was submitted to the council by a a teacher at the school, basically very specifically addressing some actions for the current president. It was then sent to the examining equity committee, which is a student committee that again is a part of council. And with some really, I think, impassioned and informed work, they drafted a resolution which is adopted by the council on the fifteenth of May. And I bring it up now because I was sort of one of the people that helped them think about writing a resolution, the template for, and you know, all those statements you say, you know, this such as and then where this where as you say this, then you must believe that. And I had, because of my NASS work, accumulated all these policies that the board has adopted. And rightly so, and sadly so, when the student looked at these policies, they went, we don't know if they're going to be there next year. And so they took that off because they wanted to make a timely statement. They wanted it to be unifying. And they wanted it to address that what some students expressed to them, the fear they felt even here within the building as to their declared identity and the risk they felt they were really at at this time in their lives. So I want to bring that to your attention because I think the council was the examining equity committee and frankly, with the help of this teacher who said, you know, we talk about bystanders when we talk about bullying, the people who stand by you when you're being, you know, asked upon or cast out. And then we have upstanders. And part of my role as a council exec is to talk about citizenship. And citizenship is about upstanding. And so I just wanted to, with pride, alert you to that and 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 also say how much they depend on you to be bystanders. So thank you.
And Linda, I don't recall actually seeing that council resolution.
It doesn't get shared.
I should tell you, it might be in the paper. Maybe she has more information.
Yeah, and why don't you send that to me and then I'll distribute it to.
I would have shared it, but I haven't.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Linda.
Yeah.
All right, and Teresa, any updates in addition to what we already talked about?
I'm just, I've uploaded the Dresden draft for the audit for FY twenty-four. The letter, we just got this and just coming out back from the conference from last week. So I'm going to get it to the auditors tomorrow and everything else so we can get that. And then we'll get the final draft on the Dresden audit and we'll have them all. Side note, the other three districts, you know, we're talking about the fee card program. So we've moved forward, done a little bit of training already on that, on AP person. And I did last week anyhow. So that one's already moving forward too. So we're hoping to get that rolling by July first. And that program, trick with that is it's kind of, it's going to work just like the American Express to that effect. And so the big thing is deciding like how the cards get distributed, who gets them. And then we set limits and things like that. So it it'll work in that concept. So we'll hopefully have that all go in July first.
Any questions, comments for Teresa?
And I did upload the financials and I also attached the first page of the very summary. And the second page is a very detailed, it's in a little more breakdown. And hopefully, if you have any questions, that will answer all that information.
Thank you. We do need to go into non-public primarily not only for the reason Jay mentioned. I hear a motion involving clauses A, B, E, and L.
I enter into non-public session at nine ten PM under RSA ninety-one, A, one, three, two.
I have a second.
Thank you.
Second back here, individually starting with Garrett, I started with Neil, sorry. Thank you for coming in.
Sullivan, yes.
Who else, yes?
Costas.
You know, Deacon Angels.
Kristi, yes, Nelson, yes.
And he needs, I think everybody should be back in a little bit.